Okay, folks, we're gonna get started. Folks, we're gonna get started. Could each of the following agencies make sure you grab a seat up front? So we got BDC is good, housing is good, finance, we're good, mayor's office, Carolyn, if you could grab one of those. BMZA, real estate and planning. Yup, Dan Taylor's BDC, Carolyn's mayor's office, Madam Comptroller's real estate, Derek's BMZA. Lori is planning, Lori, oh, Chris is planning, snuck up out of nowhere. Okay, we're here for the Community Development and Blight Elimination Panel. This is a new one for 2019, special request to the Housing Commissioner. So we're back in session, Budget and Appropriations Committee. We're here for fiscal year 2020 budget for community development and blight elimination. I'm Eric Costello, Councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. I'm joined at my left by Councilman Leon Pinkett, 7th District, Vice Chair of the Committee. Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark, 14th District. To my right, Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, 6th District, Member of the Committee. Councilman John Bullock, 9th District. Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District. To my immediate right, Marguerite Curran, Staff to the Committee. We've also been joined by Michael Huber, Chief of Staff to President Brandon Scott, as well as Rebecca Tab from the Council President's Office. And I believe Jeff Amoros from Mayor's Office will be joining us momentarily. Commissioner Brav-- oh, and also, we are joined by Councilmember Tamaya Denard from Cincinnati, Ohio. What brings you to Baltimore, ma'am?
Um, I was speaking at a LADA conference, so we're just kinda walking around. And tried to kinda stumble on in the City Hall, see your City Hall, so I was coming.
That's amazing.
A year and a half, we're out of the honor of serving as President for Cincinnati City Council. We all have national awards like you all do, we have all at-large seats, so very happy to be here.
Well, welcome to City Hall, Councilmember. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Commissioner Braverman to kick things off. I would ask that you keep your presentation to about 20 minutes. If you could please introduce everyone from your team that is here. Take it away.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Council, good afternoon. I was under the impression Carolyn Moselle from the Mayor's Office wanted to kick us off, but in that--
Yeah, no, let's do that, yup.
There you go, Carolyn.
We've had the pleasure of working with Carolyn for years and never had the opportunity to make her testify, so we do wanna take advantage of this special moment. We've also been joined by Councilmember Ryan Dorsey from the 3rd District.
All right, ready. Good afternoon, Mr. -- my name is Carolyn Moselle, Deputy Chief for Neighborhood and Economic Development in the Mayor's Office. Mr. Chair and Members of the Council, it is my pleasure to greet you with some opening remarks about the work of Baltimore City Department of Housing and Community Development, and some of its initiatives. This agency is critical to the work of bringing meaningful investment to all Baltimore neighborhoods and promoting equity and access. The last several years have seen an infusion of energy into the city's effort to support renewed investment in distressed communities. We began with the separation of the agency as a standalone agency focusing the work of DHCD more centrally on community revitalization and development. In fact, I wanna point out some early -- point out early on that some of the numbers for the agency operations may look a little skewed year over year as the numbers relate to standing up an independent agency and all that goes along with that, like staffing, equipment, facilities, et cetera. Over this time, we've also seen the provision of significant new resources for investment into communities. The Neighborhood Investment -- Impact Investment Fund was created, a public-privacy -- public-private partnership with an initial $52 million investment from the city. This fund is designed to deliver much-needed capital to historically disinvested neighborhoods. The Community Catalyst Grants Program to support and strengthen neighborhood groups was launched, providing $2 million in operating awards, 35 awards made in March, and $3 million in capital support awards to be made in July. A funding mechanism was created for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, thank you very much, Council, a fund that will grow to $20 million annually. A Choice Neighborhoods Award of $30 million was achieved by the city to help transform public housing. Also, the agency's work with the state through Project Core has advanced promoting further investment in green spaces and blight removal, with the state contributing $75 million over the last four years. DHDC issued its Community Development Framework in February, sharing an ambitious agenda to expand on existing strategies while implementing new policies and procedures as a new agency. And that framework has provided a roadmap to align the efforts of many residents, public agencies, philanthropy, agency-anchor institutions, community development finance institutions, investors, and community leaders. The agency has performed exceptional efforts in guiding the city into a new era of neighborhood investment, and with this council's support shall create the groundwork to position families for generational sustainability. Commissioner Braverman will now share more with you about the operations of the agency with his presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Of course, Carolyn stole all my good talking points.
We've also been joined by, we have Delegate Stephanie Smith in the back, and Councilmember Shannon Snead, 13th District, Member of the Committee. Sorry, I've said that so much this week.
Let me, Mr. Chair, let me open by taking advantage of your offer to introduce the team. So lots have happened since we were here before you last year. The agency has developed some, you know, continued to develop its capacity, continue to hone the mission that we're on. We've articulated that mission in our Community Development Framework, which we're very proud of, and for the record, I'm holding up. And I think, since I don't think any one of you haven't read it, I'm gonna take this opportunity to give it to our Council, visiting Councilmember from Cincinnati. This is our Framework for Community Development, and I think it takes, it takes some dedicated professionals, day in and day out, who really care about the city of Baltimore, and really care about doing tomorrow differently and better what they're doing today. And I think that really appropriately describes the leadership team at DHCD. So with that, I'm gonna start from the far right. There's Robert Pipick, who is our Chief of Policy and Partnerships, had a lot to do with this Framework document.
And Michael, Commissioner, just real quick, Bob is gonna be the, our point of contact moving forward in the government relations capacity, like Sharon and Tyrell were?
Yes, we are definitely gonna hire somebody, but in the meantime, you got him. We will backfill.
Excellent, thank you.
But I think that's, thank you, it's probably worth noting at this moment that we did lose Sharon effective yesterday, an extraordinary asset, at least we felt, and she needed to take care of family matters.
And Tyrell left the agency as well?
Tyrell left the agency, he came, we did the good job of attracting him to Baltimore from New York City, where he's joined Private Development Partner. And no doubt, Councilman Pinkett will see him on the West Side as he started up with Ernst Fowler and Associates.
Thank you.
With that said, I'm gonna ask Deputy, I'm gonna introduce Deputy Commissioner for Housing Code Enforcement and Emergency Operations, Eric Booker, and ask him to introduce any member of his team who's here.
Hey, Booker, can you grab the mic? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Braverman, Mr. Chair. I have with me today Peter Nia Begosi, he's the Assistant Deputy Commissioner, and Erica Butler is the Superintendent that runs all of my downstream operations, and she's in route. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Moving right behind me, man with, needs no introduction, but Deputy Commissioner for Human Services, Reginald Scriber. And Reggie, if there's any team members here today?
I'm a lone person.
Microphone.
Okay.
I put myself, so I'm able to handle most of the questions and hopefully I can give the right answers. We'll see, thanks.
If Reggie says it, by definition, it's the right answer. All right, I now wanna introduce Deputy Commissioner for Home Ownership and Neighborhood Preservation, which is a key part of our portfolio, Alice Kennedy. And if you have anyone from your team, no. And then somebody we're very fortunate to attract from Montgomery County, our Chief Operating Officer, and also our Acting Deputy Commissioner for Development, Mr. Jay Green. And Jay, if you wanna introduce the members of your team that are here today, some of whom you know for a very long time, and some of whom, excuse me, Chris, we stole from planning.
I have two members of my team with me, Assistant Commissioners Kate Edwards and Jim Majors.
Moving on, I have our Chief of Staff, Nadia Morgan, who keeps our agency afloat in so many ways, every day in and day out, Nadia Morgan. Next to her is our Chief Financial Officer, Elaine Harder. Beside Elaine is our Chief Strategic Communications Officer, runs all of our communications and media work, Tammy Hawley. And we, and coming, standing, ah, and way in the back row, Jason Hessler, who is our Deputy Commissioner for Permits and Litigation. And on Steve's team, there's Stacy Fried, who's our Senior, Stacy, if you'd stand up, our Senior Advisor to the Chief Operating Officer, Stacy Fried. I see, in the back, am I missing, Bob's covered. So Carol Monzie from our, the service is titled Community Sport Projects, runs our CDBG operations, and also Susan, who stood in for Shama, who's been here for so many years, in our CDBG or Community Sport Projects operations. Did I miss anybody? I don't think so, okay.
Real quick, before you begin, I'm gonna take a little liberty as Chair to ask a quick line of questioning, because I'm gonna have to leave for a little bit. I also wanna acknowledge Annie Millie in the back from Live Baltimore for my colleagues. If you have any questions for her, we've been joined by, I think I said Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District, I can't remember. Commissioner Braverman, and the same question's gonna apply to Derek and to Chris, the same line of questioning. We had a cybersecurity incident on May 6th. When is the first time that you heard from the city's CIO, Frank Johnson?
Well, the first I heard was an electronic message, which was probably within a couple of hours. And then the next, from Frank himself was at the emergency cabinet meeting, which I believe was the next morning.
On the 7th. Did Frank give you guidance on how to handle the email situation in terms of setting up email addresses?
I think that guidance came from the emergency cabinet meetings.
And do you know what the guidance was?
We were, if I recall correctly, forgive me, but if I recall correctly, it was, we were able to set up our own emails and direct traffic for the senior members of the agency through those emails, but they weren't city emails.
And was there an offer made by BSIT to do that work for you?
No.
Has there been any discussions with the CIO about vendors that you should hire?
No, but we haven't been in a position ourselves at DHCD to need vendors at this point. Most of our operations are on the Housing Authority servers, so we were more minimally impacted.
But you did experience an email outage?
Yes, absolutely.
But your files weren't impacted?
For the most part, our files were not impacted. There were some, some challenges with ePlans where we had to communicate by email across agencies.
Okay, and is the plan to continue to maintain your files on the Housing Authority's server?
Well, you know, forgive me, but the plan was always to migrate to BCIT. It's always been, it's been extraordinarily expensive, and so it's a slow process. The plan is to migrate to BCIT, but I don't have a date for you on that.
Okay.
And we had just migrated our emails, probably, you know, a month, a week, couple of weeks before this incident happened. Three weeks to a month, so had this incident happened five weeks earlier, we wouldn't have been impacted at all at DHCD, except for the ePlans reviews.
And Michael, can you pull the mic up a little bit? Derek, same for you. You can use the mic there if you want.
Mr. Chairman, we were contacted, I think, three or four days after the event. I believe, and this happens quite often, that folks think that the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals is under some other agency, so we kind of, we get missed sometimes. So I believe that the thought was that we were under the Department of Housing or Planning, so I believe that's why we were missed, so we were contacted three or four days after the event.
And were you given guidance on how to handle the email outage?
We were not.
To this day, you haven't received any guidance?
We've been on the 10:00 AM conference calls every day, so we received our guidance through that process, as well as the Web EOC process as well. So we've been involved in that.
Okay, and no suggestions from the CIO as to expenditures that should be made in response to this?
Not that I can recall.
Thank you, Chris?
My recollection is that we heard about it first at the emergency cabinet meeting, first day. The second day, we got guidance from the Law Department that we were free to set up our own systems, which we did with the help of the youngest member of the department. And I would point, we were the only one that did not go down two weeks later. But yes, we switched to a commercial Google account.
Okay. You switched to a commercial Google account?
Correct.
How did you, how did you pay for that?
It was $300.
Really?
Okay, and were you advised to go with a commercial account?
The youngest member of the department advised us that that was the most secure way.
Within planning?
We could, we could convert everybody to the same Gmail address. So everybody went from their first name dot last name at BaltimoreCity.gov to first name dot last name at BaltimorePlanning.com.
Wow.
And that cost $300.
Better watch out, because--
We need more young people.
I was giving you his name, right?
BSIT, yeah, BSIT might steal that person, because clearly they have a lot more expertise than what's going on there right now. That's, that's interesting. And they set up a commercial account for $300?
Correct, we have approximately 50 employees.
Okay. Councilwoman, yeah, on that line, please use the mic.
So basically, $300, a, an account, a, $300 a what?
$6 a month a person.
A month a person, and it's Gmail, but, but it's a commercial Gmail account. So they don't block you out of other services besides email, right? Is that it?
Correct, yes.
It's not a, yes, he took the correct route because, the reason our Gmail accounts were shut down on Thursday, May 23rd, is because despite--
Oh, were they?
--guidance from somewhere within BCIT, we were in violation of Google's Terms of Services. You're not supposed to use personal email addresses for business. Chris's team handled it the right way, because he has a genius working for him at the Department of Plan.
So, okay, so basically, I'd like to keep my, for example, in my office, I'd like to keep a backup email account, just for, you know, to have it. So if you go commercial with Gmail, you can, you can, you all can practice, you can have all the functions of a regular email system, they don't ban you from doing whatever they ban us.
Councilwoman, I can, I can walk you through, Chris wouldn't know that, but I can walk you through all of that.
How old are you?
I'm old.
I'm only kidding. Okay, I'll figure it out later, but--
Thank you, and--
We did share all this in Web EOC, what we can help in the future.
No, I appreciate that, and Annie--
Thank you.
You guys were not impacted by the incident? Answer's no, perfect, okay.
Chairman, can I ask a question, piggyback off of you?
Yeah, please.
Are you guys back up, is housing back up? Email?
Is housing email back on?
Yes, for the most part, Susan isn't here, but we're working on it. So incrementally, we're getting back up, not entirely as an agency. Yeah, so we're, it takes, everybody has to individually, every single employee individually has to be brought back up, so we're in the process.
What about BMZA?
We put in place manual workarounds, but as of sitting down for this hearing, we were not up at all. No Outlook, no email. We have limited access to housing databases through the kind courtesy of, of HC, of DHCD. A lot of our work comes from other agencies, so if other agencies are impacted, so are we. But our actual operations are in the manual workaround mode as of today.
Dan, are you guys back up at BDC?
As of this hearing, we are not back up on email or access to our files.
And Chris, are you guys still on Google, or are you back to city?
We are still on Google, we, our old emails are not back up, and we have no access to any of our files.
And Madam Comptroller, I think I asked you this yesterday, but are you guys back up on city email?
In the Comptroller's office, Walter, I know yesterday we were gonna talk to BSIT to see if, if real estate would be, you back up? Okay, as of yesterday.
And the auditors back online?
The auditors are, Harriet, are they, you're not sure, I can confirm that for you.
Okay, yeah, just let us know later, thank you, Madam Comptroller. Anyone else with any line of questioning related to this? Okay, Commissioner Braverman, take it away, thank you for indulging me.
I'm gonna probably just run into the slides, and I will make up time in the air, because I know we wanna get to questions. We are a different agency in many respects than we were the last time we were in front of you. So in the budget book, we changed the language, the one paragraph that describes who we are. So before I get started, I wanna just read that one paragraph for housing. It's on page 279 of the budget book. Major responsibilities of DHCD include working with communities and other departments to create equitable, thriving neighborhoods while minimizing displacement through a broad range of investments, code enforcement interventions, property redevelopment, supporting capacity building for community organizations, and funding before and after care, summer food programs, emergency assistance, and other human services. DHCD has responsibility for preserving and developing affordable rental housing for low and moderate income Baltimoreans through direct subsidy, financing, and assisting with site assembly. DHCD supports both neighborhood stability and affordable housing with homeownership repair and healthy housing programs, counseling for homeowners, and offering home buyers, home buying incentives. DHCD has responsibility to promote safe housing through housing code inspections and litigation, including our National Best Practice Receivership Program, overseeing the permitting, demolition, and blight removal, property registration and licensing. DHCD activities build the city tax base and create employment by developing strong neighborhoods. I thought it would, it's a little different than what we used to have by Rote in the past. And with that, we have renamed some of our services, and we have come up with new performance measures that I think reflect, you know, who we are and where we're going. And I'll jump in with the first slide. Do I, do I control these slides in any way? Oh, okay. All right, so I'm not gonna read the slides. The first slide is now affordable housing. It's very appropriate that we start there with that name. We used to, with apologies to Jim, we had a more complicated name about project finance, but this is the bottom line, affordable housing, and thank you. I think the highlight here to the council is that in, this is the service where the dedicated source of funding for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund lands. So I think the most important thing here is, you know, the measures now are gonna focus on how much affordable housing we produce, what's our leverage, how much does it cost to produce it? Oh, sorry, it went-- Oh, they're not, not in the order?
Are we?
Okay. I was told we submitted in this order, so I'm gonna, hmm. And they're, they're not all there either, are they?
So-- I know that this particular hearing is focused on community development and blight elimination. And the hearing at 4 is all other, housing or other services, so I'm not certain if there was--
Yeah, forgive me, but we were asked in what order, we provided the order, I'm not seeing that here. I don't even know if the afternoon hearing will have all the balance of the slides.
Just proceed.
Is that okay? Thank you, 'cause I know we wanna get to the questions anyway, more important than the slides, right?
And if you have a copy of it, maybe we can make a--
Yeah.
We can make a copy of--
So, 'cause I don't even see affordable housing up there. So I'm gonna start with affordable housing, that's the point I wanna make, I'll run through this pretty quickly. Property, again, as an agency, we also have the Redevelopment Authority, Authority in the city of Baltimore. That allows us to do property acquisition, disposition, and management, that's Service 749. I think that there are also some new measures here. How many dispositions do we do, how many acquisitions do we do, how many relocations do we do, and are we timely about it, and are we getting outcomes? So this is an important service for our, everything in our agency now revolves around delivering a community development agenda that we are, that we work to assure is a common vision with our community leaders, and do that in partnership with our city partners and our neighborhood community philanthropic anchor institution partners, and that we use the Neighborhood Sub-Cabinet as an implementing entity to bring us all together to affect that, those community development outcomes. So the next service is 750, these are all our community development services, sort of, can be considered blight elimination, but we would think of in the positive on community development, and that's Housing Rehabilitation Services, that's 750. Again, there's some new measures, again, it's part of our community development strategy. If we wanna promote the rise in homeownership in Baltimore City, especially in some of our long distressed neighborhoods and in our middle markets, then we wanna also ensure to minimize displacement that we invest in the legacy homeowners in Baltimore City, and this is the service that Alice's team uses to deliver that. We wanna keep, it's a number one affordable housing strategy, too, keep people in their homes. The next service is promote homeownership, which is the one, coincidentally, that's on the screen. But in this, in this, this is the service in which we wanna create new low and moderate income homeowners in the city of Baltimore. And I think Alice and her team are very good at that. But we also wanna bring new residents to the city of Baltimore, some of the work we do in concert with Live Baltimore. And we wanna, and we wanna ensure that our incentives are helping us get those outcomes. So this is a really, there's roughly almost 200 new low and moderate income homeowners the city of Baltimore a year leverage through this activity. So it's a critical community development activity, because if we look at any of our neighborhoods that we've highlighted as impact investment areas, we might see homeownership down at 20%, 25%. And we want that homeownership to be up at 50%, 50%. So this is one of the services that help us deliver that. Weatherization Services, which is 738, is also one of the services that is important to this effort. This helps us invest in our longtime homeowners, as well as other populations, to ensure that they can afford to continue to stay in their homes, that their cost of, you know, their average cost for electricity and, and, and other weather-related gas, et cetera, their utilities go down, right? And so this is a critical service, very dependent on how much money we get from HUD and from the state. Community Support Projects is 593, these are our community, really, development projects. 593 is what, what we often think of as our CDBG operations, which is where we deliver, you know, incredible resources for our nonprofit partners around the city. It's where we do youth and senior programs, literacy programs, employment job training, lead paint remediation, technical assistance to communities, and we also fund the project delivery costs related to the critical rehab and construction for affordable housing around the city. This is also, I'm looking at, I'm looking at Councilman Stokes, this is also where we will fund the largest component of the Chick Webb rehabilitation, will be out of a CDBG 108 loan.
I'm sorry, which activity is that again?
Where, 593, it's under Community Support Projects. Housing Code Enforcement is also in this segment. Again, Housing Code Enforcement marrying the Building Official Authority-- in this segment. Again, Housing Code Enforcement marrying the Building Official Authority with the how redevelopment authority component is what makes DHCD unique in many ways in terms of its ability to deliver community development outcomes in Baltimore City. And so, I'd like to say that, you know, under the leadership of Chief Booker and his team, we really have the national best practice in housing code enforcement. And under the leadership of Jason and his team, we really have, we really have the national best practice in litigation. Our receivership operations are sought after around the country. And combining that with our teams in, in, in our, in our development division, we are able to affect, you know, blight elimination through, when necessary, demolition operations using the skills and resources in this team. Register, let's see, register and license properties and contractors. I have to thank, this is a moment to thank the council. This is Service 747. With your legislation, we now have, in Baltimore City, a licensing regime for every single rental property in the city of Baltimore. That's new since we were here before you last year. Thank you, because you know that there's a tremendous amount of, of Baltimore's residents who are meeting their housing needs at extraordinarily, at affordable rents. Unfortunately, it's a bit of a devil's bargain. They're in the one and two family dwelling, market rate affordable, and there is no inspection regime for that. Or I will say there was none until this legislation was passed. So, we went, we added another 23,000 licenses since we started in January licensing these units, and we didn't go up a single nickel in budget request. And this is largely done through our own, and a lot of our productivity enhancements are done through our own proprietary automated business systems. I wanted to give a shout out to Xu Shenchiya, who did not show up, who runs our IT operations, because he's getting everyone back on email as we, as we talk today. But we're very, very lucky to have him, and that's one of the reasons we're able to do all those licenses without another nickel or another additional staff. So, these are a little out of order. We talked about some of these. Building zoning and inspections and permits. Again, you know, as we, Xu Shen is in the middle now of testing an app that will allow our building inspectors to approve work. Just wanted to acknowledge, Mr. Council President, good to see you this morning. We're just about to say that, that right now, we have some pretty good automated business systems in, in permitting inspections, but you still have to go back to the office and enter the fact that you've approved a particular inspection before the contractor can request the next six, the next inspection in succession. And now, this app we're rolling out now, you'll be in real time, be able to approve it, and the contractor at that moment, that day, will be able to call for their next inspection. So, building, and I'd like to say that, that the numbers of permits has gone up. And roughly since we met last, we launched, or just about the time we met last, we launched putting the balance of all of the remaining permits in Baltimore City online. So, you can get a permit in Baltimore City at 3:00 in the morning in your pajamas now. And the bulk of the permits that we issue, by the way, are really the type that can be issued automatically without, really without reviews and without, and paying online. So, there's probably 16, 17,000 permits a year that fit that definition. And the people no longer have to come downtown for that anymore. And the last section in this session, as I understand, the afternoon session, is administration. We're really, no change from, from last year, but that's where everyone, largely, folks you see behind you are, draw their salaries from. With that said, I know folks want to get into some questions, and Mr.-
So, we're, so we're waiting till the end of all the presentations-
Okay.
And then take, take questions. Madam Controller, are you presenting any?
Good afternoon. Walter Horton, the Director of Real Estate, and Ted Lassiter will be the team that's here that will present. Walter?
Good afternoon. Welcome to be here. The Department of Real Estate is responsible for all real estate matters. We work very closely with the Department of Housing and Community Development, Department of General Services, DPW Transportation, and getting our mission accomplished. Excuse me. Along with the Department, Baltimore Development Corporation. Apologies. Over the past several years, we've had issues resolving trees that are on city-owned land that are landlocked, that are not on street frontage. The major component of this year's budget, in addition to this year's budget, is additional money, $10,000, to go towards the efforts of removing and remediating some of the overgrowth trees that are dangerous to falling on people's properties, power lines and things of that nature. So, this year's budget does have an additional $10,000 to accommodate that particular service. Granted, we have about 1,300 properties in our inventory, all of which are in dire need of maintenance for these trees. This year's weather was probably the wettest rain weather that we've had in several, several years, and it caused several trees to be uprooted. And hopefully, with this additional money, we can, you know, meet the challenge of the, the additional trees, cutting and trimming the, the lots that are in our possession.
Questions? Thank, thank you, sir. And so, the, we, we, once again, we're waiting till all of the presentations have been made, and then we'll have questions at the end. Derek, are you presenting on behalf of, yes, BMZA?
Good afternoon, council members. My name is, my name is Derek Baumgartner, Executive Director of the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals. Our slide, our one and only slide is up on the projector. The board, as you all know, is a quasi judicial body that hears different types of appeals from several different city agencies. About 80% of our appeals come from HCD. They're zoning and or land use appeals. About 20% of our appeals come from other city agencies and/or city programs. This year, we came in under budget. We typically come in under budget. The forecast for the upcoming budget year is very similar to that. We're not requesting any enhancements, and our current funding, or our proposed funding, will continue our current level of service. We are now fully staffed at five full-time employees and five part-time board members. The only changes we have to report are, we proposed and, and were approved for the addition of two alternate board members. Alternate board members serve in the place of full-term board members when there's an, there's a potential issue for a quorum issue. If board members are out sick, or if they work commitments, we can call one of the two alternates to hear cases and vote in their stead. We also moved offices from the 14th floor of the Benton Building down to the 9th floor of the Benton Building. That has a small cost savings that covers the, any payments to the alternate board members when they are called to serve. Other than that, things are basically the same from last budget year, and I welcome your questions at the end of today.
Thank you. Council President Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Braverman, this one is for you, but, well, I don't need to explain it. I know theirs. So, you know, we're in the first year of implementation of the equity assessment program. Has your agency identified an equity coordinator as of yet?
We, we have not identified an equity coordinator. I understand we'll be getting some guidance from Mayor Young on that, but the only thing I wanted to add, the answer's no in terms of identifying an equity coordinator. But if you've taken a look at our strategy, you see that, you know, we have equitable outcomes and equitable processes highlighted as one of the most important things that we can do.
And thank you. Just a follow-up, Mr. Commissioner, have you held any trainings or scheduled trainings for your department around equity as of yet?
Not, divisions have, but I have not.
And the last thing is have you guys started to work on your baseline analysis of the equity impacts of everything that the agency does, both operational, existing and proposed?
Yes, we generally do that as a rule. I mean, that, our, our whole mission as we, when I started, I read our new mission, which starts with creating equitable and thriving communities. It's about who we work with, how we do it, and how we define success. So, it's, it's, but the direct answer to your question would be no.
Yep. So, every agency is getting asked the same question, because I just have to, I'll remind you, like I reminded you something yesterday, that by October the 17th, you guys will have to have hired someone to do equity, and have trainings, and have been through trainings and scheduled trainings, but also provide your baseline analysis of equity impacts to your agency's operation to, to the council. So, I just want to remind you of that. And also, if we could have you guys, I don't know if you want to do that or have someone else, define what your agency considers equity based on, in comparison to, there is a definition given in the law, to what we should be following.
Well, I just, I just gave my book away, but our agency defined, you know, our equitable approach and what equity means to us, you know, three different places in that book. And I would use different language here, but, you know, fundament, I mean, I'm only because I, I think what we wrote down for the world to see is really what I would want you to-
Yep.
-to take away. But it boils down to this. It's, it's what we do, who we do it with, how we do it, and, and where we do it, and, and how we collectively define success, right? So, but in, in that actual book, you'll see, you know, three different places, our definition of equity in the city of Baltimore. And it, I think it's pretty clear. If you want me to read one of them here, I can-
You're fine. You don't have to go track the book down.
Okay.
We can, we can find it. Moving on for a second, can you talk to me about how the agency is gonna attack all levels of the affordable need for affordable housing in, in Baltimore, both at the middle rate for people who are homeless or previously homeless, everyone in the spectrum? Can you talk about the strategy that you guys are gonna use to tackle that?
Sure. Again, you know, we don't have a magic wand, right? So, what we do have is, you know, some new resources thanks to the council, you know, and we have some capacity that we're building thanks to the entire team, but, but Jay Green is leading that. And, and so, first and foremost, it's about resources. It's about, you know, an understanding that we have to meet the needs of our communities in terms of how they see those needs. So, there's gonna be affordability, it's gonna be about protecting our affordable, protecting our, our homeowners who are, you know, basically, housing costs burdened, right? So, they, they have an affordable housing need, so we need to get services to them. And that's something we do through Alice's shop, right? At the same token, we have people who are renting that need to be homeowners to lower their housing cost burden, believe it or not. And again, we do that through Alice's shop. We need to create housing opportunities and permanently supportive housing for our, hopefully formerly homeless population. And we do that through the development division, and particularly through funds that we have from Home and from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund largely, right? Because that's what, and again, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is a great place for that, because it serves 50% and below of AMI strictly. So, right now, for instance, the state has a 9% tax credit round with a dedicated amount to permanently supportive housing. We want Baltimore to get that award. And if Baltimore gets that award, it will likely be because of our land assembly tools that we bring to bear to help promote that kind of development, which you'd also see at 1411 Argyle. So, Jerner Place, our land assembly, and the support of our capital and the stock to meet the needs of our homeless population. And then we do, again, a big part of who serves 30% and below in the city of Baltimore is the housing authority for Baltimore City. But we play a role, and we will play at 50% and below with the trust fund. But traditionally, we come in a little bit above that with promoting the, the light tech, the low-income housing tax credit deals that meet the need at roughly 50 and 60% of AMI. But the question is, and, and again, through the inclusionary housing program, we play a role, and, and more so going forward, because of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, in creating affordable options in communities of opportunity. So, we have, you know, we, we hit it in a number of different points, from homelessness to protecting homeowners at 80% of AMI. And what we want to be going forward is much more strategic about where we do that, how we roll that into a package that promotes a community development agenda that our communities want to see in their neighborhoods, and in particular, in the impact investment areas we identified in the, in our strategy.
Yeah, thank you. And I want to follow up on a point you made about, especially about lowering the burden by allowing people to own homes and become homeowners, especially if we know that the middle area is where we, where we lacking that. And actually, I don't know what her new title is, but I was just calling. Chief Mosel actually did a big presentation for the National League of Cities this past fall about how to help the agency, housing agency, increase black homeownership. And wanted to ask a follow-up question about how we're gonna do that and be intentional about doing that, and also if part of the equity trainings that we're, we're using are specifically tailored to stopping the homeownership discrimination and how to figure out to do the things that she was saying, help those people who are in that middle bracket, African-Americans, own home, become homeowners in Baltimore.
So, the answer's absolutely yes. And I, you promised to do that presentation for our senior staff. I'm looking at Deputy Chief of Staff Mosel. But just so you know, if, if you're wondering, are we just like trying to pin the tail on a duckie, or do we know what we're doing? Of the 200 CDBG low, moderate homeownership income awards that we make, low, low ownership, low, moderate homeownership awards that we make in terms of creating new homeowners at the low mod level, majority of those are in middle markets in the city of Baltimore, and 80%, 86% are African-Americans. So, we are, we, we, it's, it's a significant goal of ours to create homeownership opportunities in our middle markets, and to create those opportunities for, for largely our black residents.
And thank you. And we'll follow up with you about how, what kind of resources you think you would need and amounts to help, help that expand.
Oh, Alice's eyebrows just went up. Okay, thank you. Look forward to that.
Mr. Braverman, I just had a couple of questions. The first is related to, let's see, find this here. Weatherization, Service 738. It, well, it's not, it appeared is, that much of the resources for a weatherization program come from the state, the lion's share. Do we anticipate that we would continue to receive that level of resources from the state? And if not, how do we forecast identifying additional funds that would, would compensate, you know, what we are or what we won't receive from the state?
I'm gonna, to keep things moving, I'm gonna ask Alice if she needs to jump in. But the thing is, we, we do expect to have even more resources from the state. Is it our general fund obligation? No.
No.
Alice, can you, can you come up?
Didn't think so.
I thought it was our general fund, but it's, that's in promote homeownership.
Hello. So, in order to access the available weatherization funding from the state, we cannot fully access the entire weatherization funding unless we were to receive a matching general funds amount of around $565,000 for this next fiscal year. Without that, we will not be able to receive all of the available funding to us. So, there's around 280 additional weatherization clients to 300 that will not be able to be weatherized, and we won't be able to meet the target.
So, 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 I might have to ask you to restate that, because I don't want anybody to miss that point. Are you saying for this current fiscal year or the upcoming fiscal year?
So, for both the fiscal year 19, we had requested general funds to help match the weatherization funding that's available from the state. We did not receive those for fiscal year 19, so we will not meet our- So we will not meet our weatherization targets for fiscal year nineteen. We also requested additional general funds. It's around five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of general funds that if we receive those, that five hundred and sixty-five thousand in general funds, it will essentially allow us to access up to an additional three million to four million dollars of state funding for weatherization.
So how much did we miss out on FY nineteen?
Um, we have essentially have left around three million dollars, two to three million dollars.
That if we would have had five hundred and sixty, about five hundred and sixty thousand dollars committed to weatherization for FY nineteen, we would have been able to access an additional three to four million dollars?
Correct.
Um, what was the, what? Um, so why didn't we do that? Why, why didn't we find, and, and that's like three hundred people?
Yes.
Who would have been able to get weatherization served?
Which are below two hundred percent, uh, federal poverty level.
And it's not like you can, it's not like we can go, um, in this year and put an additional five hundred and sixty thousand dollars in access the, the, the three or four million that we lost in FY nineteen. That money is gone.
We potentially, we actually still potentially could have it. It depends on if, how much of that the state has reallocated to, um, other jurisdictions across the state.
So if, so if, if the state didn't reallocate it to someone else, whatever's left over, we could possibly?
Possibly. And then the state also, at the end of the three-year cycle specifically for Empower, which is every three years, that if that funding isn't fully used, then it kind of goes away, which is also unfortunate because we all as residents pay into that.
So that seems like a pretty good return on our investment, five hundred and sixty thousand for three to four million. Why, why wouldn't we have done that?
I think it's probably worth noting that, that we're meeting with BBMR. Now, that isn't settled. So that's still on the table.
Okay. But, but we're not going to do that this year, right?
No, that's on the table for this year still. So.
You, you mean on the table as?
As in, we are working, we are meeting with BBMR to get access that five sixty for FY twenty's budget. So that, I know you see a budget in front of you now that speaks to what Alice mentioned, but we are still working on getting that money for the reasons Alice just indicated.
Right. We've already blown nineteen. Nineteen's gone, out the door. We, there were three hundred people we could have helped that we didn't.
We're, we're hoping that we can still revive some of that fund. We are meeting with BBMR going forward to.
So, so when you say meeting, like, are you having to negotiate to get that money? Is that the kind of meeting?
That's kind of how the budget works, yeah.
No, I mean, I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, is it like a, a, a meeting with BBMR saying, oh yeah, you got it? Or is it a meeting like, um, maybe you need, you, you need to take me out to dinner to see if you get this?
I wish, I wish it was that easy. I would, I would buy dinner for that outcome. Um, it's, it's, they're going to hopefully find those funds because of how important it is.
Well, I, I know, I can't speak for my colleagues. I'm going to be looking for that, those funds in this budget because it doesn't make any sense for us not to leverage those additional three to four million dollars. And, you know, and, and one, another reason why this is critical for me is that the, the population that is impacted by these dollars. Um, these, oftentimes, these are seniors, these are, um, um, poorest homeowners. And, you know, oftentimes, people talk about how communities are gentrified and how people are displaced. Sometimes this is the reason why. They can't even just keep up the property. So they end up being displaced because they can't maintain. And so this is potentially three hundred people who, you know, could lose their homes or be, you know, have to make other choices that we could, we could redeem their property and help them.
I, I couldn't, as I opened, when I was saying, this is one of the tools we use to keep residents in their homes. And it's critically important that we do that, especially in the areas that we're investing in.
So BBMR, do, would you like to speak to this?
So I can't speak to the nineteen or, uh, the decision-making process around not including the matching funds. I can say that we are trying to find, as we do with all agencies that have grant, grant matching requirements, whether there's existing appropriation that we could utilize for the grant match. Uh, for nineteen in particular, D H C D is projecting a surplus that we are trying to identify a, a pool of money that we can show, uh, our state partners that would be available for weatherization services. Same thing for fiscal two thousand and twenty. Is there a pool of money within the city across all funds that we can point to as part of the match? Or, or if we need to do a, a move between services?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I don't disagree. I mean, we, we, we can look through these two books and, and find plenty of examples where we wasted half a million dollars. And this is not a waste. This is, this is, uh, an expense that we know yields um, immediate impact in our communities.
Can I, can I piggyback on, I just, do we use the money, all the money?
Councilwoman Snead.
Do we use the money from the previous years, like seventeen? Do we use all the money in seventeen, all the money in eighteen? So we, this money doesn't go to waste?
Yes, is the answer yes?
Seventeen.
Yes. In eighteen? So it's the cat, the asset, the capital that, that is available, if we don't have the general funds, we can't pull all of it down. So seventeen, yes, and eighteen, no. Eighteen looks a little like nineteen. So, so I think it's important that going forward, it's different.
Are there other programs besides weatherization that are similar to this in housing where, um, we, 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 we are accessing um, additional state funds based upon our commitment?
I'm not aware of any state or federal grants outside of, outside of what we do in, in homeownership that we're not pulling down. It's, it's, this, this, the HUD led, HUD led grants, right? We have to. Right, but that's going forward, right? Okay. Okay. So far, that's the only one where money has been left on the table so far.
Um, right, got you. But are there other programs where we've, that are, have a similar process, but we've made certain that we've made that, we, we've made the, uh, budgetary commitment to it so that we didn't lose the dollars?
I don't think so. I mean, I, wait, what?
I think there are.
Is there?
All right. So under service seven fifty, which is housing rehabilitation services, that service covers our Office of Rehabilitation Services as well as our Lead Hazard Reduction Program. And the Lead Hazard Reduction Program has a matching requirement for the HUD, um, Lead Hazard Reduction Grant Program. So we just finished a three-year cycle of that grant in December, and that had matching funds that were committed actually by the city and the state that allowed us to access that, uh, three point six million dollars. We're about to start another three-year grant cycle. We have that matching commitment from the city and the state to access those additional dollars. There's a new HUD Lead Hazard Reduction Grant Opportunity that will be, um, announced in the next thirty days that could bring an additional nine million dollars to the city of Baltimore for lead hazard reduction if we can, um, identify an additional seven hundred thousand in city general funds to match per year for that, um, nine million dollars.
So for seven hundred thousand dollars, we could access nine million?
For seven hundred thousand dollars, five hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars per year, we will be able to access two million dollars for lead hazard reduction if, um, when this RFP comes out, by, the RFA comes out.
For, um, for how many years?
That will be a five-year, uh, grant, uh, program. It's the first of the kind that's being offered by HUD specifically for lead hazard reduction. And it's going to be only available to eight or nine jurisdictions across the country.
And from, from your experience, um, how many households can two million dollars a year impact as relates to lead abatement?
Um, lead abatement is extremely expensive. And we have houses that we do, that we have to match state dollars with in our city general. That's where the matching comes in as well as with salaries. Um, so we could be looking at an additional, uh, two hundred, um, homes, one to two hundred, one hundred fifty homes a year over the next five years for lead hazard reduction.
Yeah, and, and, and you're right, it's an expensive, um, work, but the, the impacts are also critical.
Correct. The long-term, um, social health-related, um, impacts are exponential across the years when you look at.
So has this request already been made?
We've, haven't made it formally because I'm waiting for the official, um, for HUD to release the official, um, NOFA so that we can read through it completely. But I was, I've had a heads up that it's coming, and I've done the math, and that's what we'll be needing to look at.
Um, I think Councilman Dorsey has a question.
Uh, thank you.
Related to this, correct?
Uh, actually, no, I thought that was.
Okay, then I'll, I'll, I'll come back to you. Councilman Bullock.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And again, I thank you all for being here. I get the pleasure to talk to housing very frequently. So some questions I know they answer to, but other ones definitely want to thank you a little more depth and explain some things to our colleagues. Um, just following up on the question from Councilman Pinkett, and I'm so glad that my colleague from West Baltimore raised this because again, we look at many of our seniors who are dealing with issues from furnaces to, uh, to their roofs and to some of the issues that are really affecting their houses. Uh, one question I did have around this, it looks like, um, the most significant, uh, number of homes weatherized was back in FY fifteen. And then we've had a bit of a decrease down to three fifty. Just trying to figure out what the, uh, why that number was the way that it was.
Sure. So again, you know, it's so great that we have this Affordable Housing Trust Fund because it takes money to solve these problems. And I think one of the things, takeaways from what Alice was just talking about was, you know, it takes a lot of money to get this work done. You certainly want to pull down everything that you can. So, and there's sort of an unlimited need unfortunately in Baltimore City, a limited amount of capital. There was money coming in from the Customer Investment Fund at that time that we spent down. So when that money was gone, those kinds of numbers were achieved from that, I believe it was the Exelon merger, is that correct? So the Exelon merger rained down some money into the city of Baltimore that was great. And we were able to hit numbers like that during that time with a, with that, what I would call capital, even though it might be showing up in the operating budget, was available.
Got it. That's helpful. And then one follow-up question. Again, you started off talking about affordable housing, and I know some of our colleagues have, have had interest in that, not only the fund, but also as it relates to, um, inclusionary housing. And so I know, um, there has been a new board, uh, new member's been named, a, a new chair. Um, uh, there hasn't been a, meetings in this last several months just looking at what are you, what are you seeing going forward with inclusionary housing, how that kind of fits into the overall framework of what you're looking at in terms of affordability?
So, um, one, I.
And also the resources that we have or don't have in that regard.
Yeah. I mean, I think the most important thing is that the way that some of these new resources can be used in, in ways that promote outcomes across other, create other opportunities. So the Affordable Housing Trust Fund really creates an opportunity for us to get units in communities of, of opportunity in other places around the city to get more mixed income results because waivers wouldn't be as readily granted if there's a source of funds. So I really feel like, you know, we, we are just going to stand the Inclusionary Housing Board back up. We have new members. And, um, and we will be, you know, looking, I think, working with our partners and, uh, you know, largely in the Housing Roundtable and, um, excuse me, um, uh, what is Barbara Samuel's organization called? ACLU, thank you, our partners. How could I forget that? I don't know. But the, the, you know, to, to really, and our partners in the industry, again, everybody together, to sort of work, make that legislation work more effectively towards the intended goals. We do think even within the existing legislative structure that, you know, we're really able, we would be able to get better outcomes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Middleton?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, I first of all, just want to thank your team for the, you do have a very tough job in a city that's basically, um, just trying their best to change the, the way of life and the quality of life in the city. And, um, all of that and safety is definitely in your hands along with, uh, the planning department, um, real estate, zoning, I mean, and BDC. You're all kind of working together and, um, progress is definitely in your hands. So, um, you, you do do some wonderful things that some people, uh, really don't know about because they just continue to see, um, the blight. And, um, it, it's really a, a lot of work. Um, so all that to say, my two questions, uh, there is, um, do you have some type of aggressive plan to, uh, better maintain the vacant owned city properties, particularly when, um, a homeowner that's next to a beat up, abandoned piece of property is, is not maintained? And you come by and cite them, and here they have the city property that looks most of the time worse. And then they call us and we have to deal with, you know, I guess trying to explain, give an explanation when there really isn't any. And also to add to that, um, you own properties like, um, that people really don't know that they're city-owned, like basketball courts that are like hidden in a, a deep blighted community. Um, you want to speak on that?
Uh, just a little bit. I would say the short answer is yes. I know Kate Edwards who's here and her team have done an analysis of sort of every city-owned vacant that we have that might be still unfortunately, uh, deteriorating next to a homeowner. And I know we set out to, to put, we even have occasionally still in our inventory, and this is what we want to get ahead of. When you ask, do we have an aggressive policy to re-roof anything that we own next to a homeowner? Um, and I know in your district, there was a couple on Cold Spring Lane, um, just going, uh, just going west of Greenspring. Um, and I know we had some longtime residents there next to our two properties. So, um, the short answer is yes. One is to take a look at our entire inventory, take a look at where we hit that. The other thing is, it is true that there's a, a legacy of the seventies that D H C D has titled to some, uh, some unusual common areas that are maintained as, that are parks ostensibly like Briscoe Park in Coldstream, Homestead, Montebello. We are not outfitted to maintain parks. And I think one of the great things about the, the, uh, the neighborhood sub-cabinet is, you know, in order to meet the needs of that community, we really need to put a little capital into that and provide some operating on a regular basis and move it over to Wreckin' Parks. And that, those are the kinds of, those are the kinds of properties we're identifying. And those are the kinds of outcomes that we're looking for through the neighborhood sub-cabinet. And of course, with the help of, of planning throughout this whole process. Um, so we do understand the issue. We do have, you know, a way to get ahead of it uh, in, in regard to those two different things. But again, it's, and most ostensibly, you know, we're focused on it if we're in, um, you know, one of what we've identified as a, as a initial impact investment area, which is like thirty neighborhoods in the city of Baltimore, you know, where we will be aggressive about this and where, you know, to, to, uh, Councilman Pinkett's issue, where we need to ensure we get every resource we possibly can. Because when we identify, when we index and checklist these needs, it's going to be more money than we have. So we better make sure we have, have gotten every dollar we can.
Because I know this area, it's a, well, it is a basketball court right there on Key Wharf and Park Heights in a corner. And, uh, you know, I just kind of imagine Safe Streets helping people. And you, if that court was utilized for, you know, youth activities, um, uh, the Office of African American Male Engagement is in that area. I mean, they could use that space for activities to keep youth, um, you know, doing things. Um, that's just one example.
I'd love to, I, I would use my device here and pull out Code Map and see, yeah, who is maintaining that park. I don't know if that's a D H C D park or a Wreckin' Park park.
Well, it's an actual paved basketball court.
But the answer is that Park Heights is the greater Park Heights area. All the neighborhoods in the greater Park Heights area are actually in an impact investment area. So we should be able to get to that corner in that issue directly in those work groups.
And I, I guess my second question, is there a, I'd like to have an update on the Housing Inspector Apprenticeship? How is that moving along?
I'm very proud of that. I don't want to steal Deputy Commissioner Booker's thunder because I, we're very proud of, of that activity. So thank you for asking.
Yes, ma'am, and, and thank you for that question. We, um, we brought on seven in October of, uh, twenty eighteen. They actually finished October twenty nineteenth, their year will be up. Unfortunately, we lost two. We still have five holding strong. They're going to finish. And they'll go from a thirty-two thousand dollar salary to forty-two thousand, um, just by completing that apprenticeship program. And as we move into this next fiscal year, we plan to do the same thing for, uh, October upcoming.
So that means there's two openings again?
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to use those, uh, use. Yes. We're going to, we're going to use those, use those and keep that in the apprentice space. The, I have two 19-year-olds, one 22-year-old, a 24-year-old, and a 28-year-old. So, they're excited. They've, they know the mission, and they're out there every day getting at the work, so I'm very proud to have them on the team.
And city employees, I'm sure Councilwoman Snead would be interested in knowing that, that they are, I mean, they are city residents.
Yes. Except, except one. Except one. One of them, our mother works, is the Eastern District Commander.
Okay.
I'm sorry, not Eastern District, Southeast District Commander. 19-year-old.
Thank you.
All right. Quite welcome.
Councilwoman Snead.
It's really important we have a career path out of high school, you know, to really a well-paying job, so.
Thank you.
DHCD's administrative office staffing levels has doubled since 2018, from 22 positions to 44 positions in 2020. What are we doing with these additional 20 positions?
I think Deputy Chief of Staff Moselle spoke to that before we got started, but that was when Mayor Pugh determined she would split the agencies, the Housing Authority and the Department of Housing Community Development. So, there were 37 split-funded positions, and we created about 22, 2022, new positions, including my own. I'm in that list, right? So, they're, the head of IT, the head of CFO, the head of Communications, Chief of Staff, all those positions are on the Housing Authority side.
How many vacancies now, since the split, do we have, I guess, including?
Probably, again, we, in finance alone, we just lost three people. There may be around nine at the moment, but that's because we did lose some people, and others, we're getting some of those positions, and additional two we're trying to fill. So, we do, we're hobbled a little bit, but we expect to fill them all.
Can I, do I-
You get two questions. Go ahead.
Okay.
I'm not going anywhere either, so.
So, I feel like we have a lot of, of course, vacant buildings all over the city, as we know. I'm really concerned about some of our main streets and the vacant position, the vacant buildings that sit there, and I'm wondering if there's any way to, if we could speed up the process for receivership for some of these I sourced, for people in the community that are like interested in these buildings.
Well, anytime, any, Councilwoman, anytime you know of someone on the back end who would have the capacity to renovate and use any of our commercial structures, we would be only too happy to receiver them. They move generally pretty quickly for litigation, right? Depending on whether there's much of a fight on the other side, right? You could delay things if you want to litigate. But generally, buildings you're thinking of may very well move more quickly if they're, if they're actually abandoned. But at citywide, as a strategy, we generally move directly to receivership in probably at least half or more than half of the neighborhoods in Baltimore City, where we can trust that there's a market on the back end. The only thing receivership can't do is make a, the math work on a building. In other words, if no one's going to bid, receivering it isn't going to further a positive outcome. But if you know of somebody who's willing to, we would, we would be happy to receiver that property.
Because I've spoken with neighborhood groups in my neighborhood, it would be a perfect spot for them to store bags, or like they can't pay market-right, market-rate prices for maybe a building on Monument Street, but we want them to have the space. It's better not to sit vacant and look a mess than the neighbors to use it for something, something good for the neighborhood.
So, I just want to be clear, the receivership, even though it applies to commercial property, only applies to property that under the code is considered vacant. So, it's typically a boarded up. Under, it's a boarded up?
Yes.
Okay. So, it'll apply there. Underutilized commercial space that's not boarded up, it likely wouldn't apply to. But boarded up, commercial buildings, it will likely apply to. So, I mean, we're happy to, to look at that inventory with you.
Okay.
Councilman Dorsey.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Can you clarify for me, you made numerous references to AMI and percentage of AMI, kind of in the same breath, as low to moderate income, low and moderate income. Can you clarify for me what you mean when you say AMI?
It's a lot of the sort of federal-
Do you mean-
Area median income.
Do you mean the city, or do you mean the metropolitan region? There's a significant difference between the two.
Right. But the, we're using what we are required to use for compliance obligations, and what's in the legislation, which is area median, right? The 30% of area median income for a family of fours is like $28,000 or so.
Twenty-eight thousand?
Roughly $28,000.
Okay. What, maybe I don't understand what that means, where that 28 comes from.
Well, that, where that comes from?
Yeah.
It is, you know, what the, the area-
Speak up a little bit.
The area that's defined is, the area, and area median income is limited to the political city of Baltimore. Okay?
It's the city of Baltimore, it's not the metropolitan area.
Right.
And that 20, would you say 26 represents what?
So, so I was saying 30% of the area median income. So, what is the median, median income, and then 30% of that? So, so the area, you're better at math than I am.
I mean, the median income of Baltimore City is like $42,000 a year. 30% of that would be like $11,000 a year.
For a family of four, it's probably higher.
$12,000 a year.
For a single, but a family of fours is how it's defined. And there's a table that the state publishes that-
Okay.
That we use generally.
So, first thing I just wanted to clarify is that we're talking about the city, not the metropolitan region. Okay, so a couple of questions. We do a lot for folks like at or below 30%, and then we do some other assistance for folks at like 80 to 100%? Is that not correct?
Well, I mean, general, we do, we can provide assistance across the board, but many of our programs are designed to help low and moderate-income Baltimoreans, which would use the definition up to 80% of AMI.
Up to 80% of AMI.
For moderate income.
Okay.
And low, if I, Mr. Majors is looking at me, but low would be about 50%, and extremely low at 30, if that's it.
And so, some of the-
Correct nomenclature. Yes. Getting a nod in favor.
The assistance that I guess has been talked about today is kind of grants for closing costs and things like that, and then also weatherization, things like that. In that, there, my understanding is that there's a problem when we talk about helping people into homeownership. Is there, there's a lending problem at a certain level? Banks don't want to loan, make loans below a certain amount. I don't know. I guess I've heard like $50,000 or something like that. Last year, in 2018, I went to members of the General Assembly and proposed to them a homeowner's property tax credit for, it was for city, city employees making below, well, in any case, a $2,500 property tax credit for low-income city employees. It didn't pass in 2018, but it did pass in 2019. And so, I'll be introducing the bill here to the council. But, you know, a big catalyst for wanting to do that was looking at areas like South Baltimore, Brooklyn, Curtis Bay, where you can, where the median rent is like $1,100 a month, but the median property value is like $45,000. I mean, if you were paying a mortgage on a property like that, you'd be paying like $300 or $400 a month. What are we doing to help people into homeownership of properties of that value when a bank won't lend them the money to do it?
Well, you identified a real issue, and we're working to bring new programs to address the issue. I think, you know, Alice has spent a fair amount of time on that. Do you want to talk a little bit about what you're working on? Well, you, you do have in CDBG-
I'd love to hear from Alice.
It's about making-
Could we hear from Alice?
So, Neighborhood Housing Services does help with, with loans, with mortgages, mortgages at this amount. But we have, I think, $300,000 in the CDBG for this program.
So, one of the main issues is the fact that banks typically, while they could lend, the traditional bank could lend down around $50,000, $55,000, some can go as low as 45, based off of their calculations, when they say can. They will choose not to, because it's extra work, it takes longer, et cetera, to originate a mortgage of that size, and based on lending laws. So, for the last two years, we've been looking at trying to have, work with a local lender, somebody that has funding that also they feel more comfortable with, trying to create a program that has flexible underwriting standards as well, with alternative forms of credit as possible, rental history, cell phone bill history, BGE history, et cetera, not just basing it solely on credit score, W-2s, et cetera, helping to have people be able to show that they are making $30,000 a year, but let's say that they're getting paid in different ways, and haven't filed a W-2, or aren't receiving a W-2 or a 1099, showing that they can make payments in and out of bank accounts, to be able to qualify for a mortgage, which are in different federal programs allowable. One of the key things, there are some changes that we've noticed that could potentially change. One is at the state level in the General Assembly, which would be to look at how we changed mortgage brokering laws after the crash in 2008 and so forth, to allow for private lenders. It used to be that as a private person, I could lend up to five loans, make five mortgages using my own funds a year, and they've changed that. Now, you can only do it if you are lending to a family member, a direct family member. There are people that would look at wanting to create a pool, or lending on that side for the sole purpose. So, that is one thing to kind of have, look at the state level to open that back up in a thoughtful and non-predatory manner. Some of the concerns around that would be that it was predatory. The other potential way is looking at lenders to create a pool of funds, to a loan pool that would allow for that to happen, or another source. But essentially, it's looking at how do we provide an alter, have a pool of money that would be an alternative mortgage lending pool for those, that price purchase point, between $35,000 and $70,000.
And have there been any discussions about the city being that lender?
We have had some internal discussions about that, yes.
And how those discussions go?
They're, I'm hopeful. It's, it's a process to try to identify funds to create a pool that would be needed, to do even a pilot, around 2 to 3 million, and then looking at how that could go up from there.
Is there anything, we do make other loans, as the city does make other loans?
We have a deferred loan program under our Housing Rehabilitation Services Program. So, we do do loans for housing repairs, yes.
So, we do make loans-
Correct.
-in general. So, it's not something we have any explicit barrier to being able to do structurally?
Correct. There'd be a minor staffing look to be able to make sure that the processing on those could be handled.
And so, you said a pilot would cost 2 to 3 million dollars?
Correct.
What would a pilot like that look like?
Could be potentially identifying anywhere between another 20 to 30 properties that we could assist home buyers purchasing in that price point. And then, another component of this as well is looking at inventory and preparing buyers in that process. So, we're looking at the whole pipeline. So, it's also about building the pipeline, and having, you know, educated, qualified buyers of what they'd be looking at. So, it includes homeownership counseling, how to maintain the home once you have it, how to civic engagement, being a part of your neighborhood association, et cetera. So, it's trying to look at every aspect of that purchase.
When you say 20 to 30 properties for 2 to 3 million dollars, is, over what period of time would that kind of lending take place?
We could probably, given some of the conversations we've had with home buyers across the city, we could probably have that out the door within a year to a year and a half.
Okay. That's, I think that's good insight. I'm sure some of my colleagues are interested in that as well. Can I ask another question about the relationship between transportation and affordability? In many of the discussions, I don't know who I'm asking, so, don't feel needy to stand. There are often discussions about affordability of housing being measured by like 30% of a person's income for housing, but there is, I think, growing interest in using kind of a different assessment of that, which would be more like 45% of income devoted to housing and transportation combined. I say that to say that there are very known relationships between affordability of living, not just affordability of housing, living, general affordability that links transportation and housing. Have, I guess my question is, has the Housing Department looked into any potential policy changes, or, or anything that, that it is aware of, that it could advocate for changing to eliminate some of these transportation-related burdens to housing? One thing in particular that I know that folks have talked about is the idea of unbundling, that, that if you live downtown, your landlord is probably already offering you a parking space as an option that you can pay for. But if you live in the farther reaches of the city, West Baltimore, far West Baltimore, your landlord is probably rolling the cost of a parking space into your rent, whether or not you own a car, whether or not you can afford to own a car. So, you're, the cost of housing is driven up by this unnecessarily bundled-in cost associated with transportation mode that you don't have. Is the Planning Department, is the Housing Department looking at things in the city where we are overlooking opportunities to eliminate cost barriers that are not related to housing? Another one would be parking minimums in our zoning code, forcing people to build a, you know, a one-to-one ratio of parking spaces related to the number of housing units they're building.
I'll start on this. I mean, I think, to answer the last question first, we did eliminate the parking minimums in the, in the transform, in the, in the update of the zoning code.
No, only in a limited number of places.
I think in-
There's still parking minimums?
To that, but I think in all, in all the higher-density parts of the city, we did that.
The short answer is yes, we're working on it, and as soon as we have our computers-
Laurie, if you can introduce yourself.
Sorry. Laurie Feinberg, Assistant Director, and Councilman Dorsey was on our committee to look at the parking numbers, and that is on our annual update to go beyond the ones that we did in the year 2016.
Okay. Are there other, other things that we're looking at from a planning and housing perspective to, to eliminate cost burden that is unrelated to actual housing costs?
So, first of all, the ratio of household income to, to your housing cost is often determined by the lender. I will say, as the former director of a housing counseling agency, there is a judgment made there, particularly by housing counseling, as to what is sustainably affordable for a client in a housing counseling situation, or a borrower in a, in a lending situation. So, I'm not sure if that's a regulatory issue or not. The banks are regulated one-way, CDFIs and private lenders are regulated differently. So, there are always opportunities by pursuing mortgages that are made by non-bank institutions. You have more flexibility. For example, with Neighborhood Housing Services of Baltimore, you can, you can provide a different mortgage product. The final, I'm, I'm not aware of landlords in certain parts of town rolling parking- of town rolling parking costs into their, into their pricing. Certainly in low-density neighborhoods, I doubt that would happen because there probably isn't an off-street parking component. We do see connections between housing pricing, housing values, and the length of time spent in commuting. So that is something that's tracked by the Census Bureau, and in certain parts of town, particularly in West Baltimore, where commuting times appear to be much lo, to be lo, longer than other parts of town, there is a correlation between commuting times, we don't know if it's cause and effect, but a correlation between commuting times and housing values.
So where there's a longer commute time, there's a lower home value?
Correct.
So we could be increasing our city's tax base, basically, by increasing the value of properties in the city by reducing commute times?
That's, that's a correlation, not a, it's not a proven cause and effect.
Yes, that's a correlation, not causation, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Did you have anything at Mike?
Vice Chair, how many questions? I get two or four?
Do you want one?
Commissioner Braverman, and I just want to mention, and I'm gonna get into what I'm talking about. My colleagues talked about apprenticeships, and I know Councilwoman Middleton talked about it. So starting September this year to May of twenty twenty-two, MIRVO and West Side Skill Center be opening in the evenings for eighteen to twenty-four years old, and it's going to be pre-cyber medical coding, diesel mechanic, and pre, pre-construction. And the reason why I want to do that, because when I was in high school, you got there in high school, but you don't have those schools open up in the evenings, during the weekends, during the summer, to create pathways for our young people. And the reason why I mention that, how we demonstrate that we being inclusive when it comes to wealth creation? By that I mean, how can HCD help create homegrown developers through apprenticeship program?
We do, we do hire on having an apprenticeship program. We also, through CDBG's support nonprofit organizations, I would think...
I'm talking about, Commissioner, I'm talking about homegrown developers, people that, that want to go into development. Can housing create apprenticeship program to help those developers to know what their process look like and how to navigate it?
Generally, what we do is fund organizations that do that work. Like ourselves, we don't develop houses, but there are organizations that do develop houses and do apprentice programs in the course of it. Civic Works is probably a really good example, is that... And the LEDC, and Latino Development.
I'm not talking about Civic Works, I'm talking about developers. Civic Work is probably a small piece of what I'm talking about. I'm talking about homegrown developers in this city. Housing should have apprenticeship program to help those homegrown developers take advantage of all this development going on in Baltimore City, especially in African-American neighborhoods. So can we, can I talk to you about how we can make that happen? I think it can, it can happen.
Absolutely. There's a, there's a group that, that BCL is, is working with called the African American Home Builders Association. That's, that's set up just to do that work that you're describing right now.
Well, I, I would like to get the information. One more, I received an anonymous phone call, and when housing do their incentive, when people purchase houses, I'll use a good example, EDBI, if they live in there for five years, it's ten thousand dollars, they can use that towards the incentive. And the person said that some people have taken advantage of that because the actual house that they bought through their incentive program, they went and bought another one. They moved out of the house that they got the ten thousand dollars incentive and rented that out, and they live in another house in the same area. And that means that they probably owe the city probably six thousand dollars. So the reason why I'm saying that, I don't know if anybody in your office is monitoring that, so we need to go back and look at that because that's been happening a lot throughout the city. So...
I can just say, Alice, we can, we do some monitoring now, right? So we do monitor, so we, we ought to find out, maybe we could do that exception check on one address, if you don't mind, see how that, how our monitoring might have missed that, so we can improve it, if you don't mind giving us that address.
Well, I only said that because you might have to monitor all of it. Because you don't know, exactly, if that's happening in one place, it might be happening all over the city.
Yeah, sometimes an exception report's helpful.
Suggestion that maybe your monitors need to monitor just a little more, that's all.
I'll pass that on to Deputy Commissioner Kennedy now.
Thank you.
Councilman, was that your last question?
Yeah.
I, I have a couple more questions of housing, but before I ask my questions, if no one else has a question for Madam Controller or Mr. Baumgartner from BMZA, I would, you know, excuse them unless someone...
A request to follow up.
For, for BMZA or Controller's Office?
No.
Okay, in that case, if, you can feel free to stay with us if you like. You're welcome. I, I want to hold on to planning for a minute, sorry about that. Well, no, well, right, planning, the mayor's office and BDC, to stick around for a minute. Is it going to be quick? All right, Councilman Dorsey.
Bob, are you taking down the council request right now? I don't see Jeff here. Okay. I want, I want to get a list of all of the assistance programs that housing offers, and how many people are being assisted by them, what the value of them is, and what the requirements are for each of those programs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just to confirm, Councilman Dorsey, you got the list of assistance programs, how many are served, and the total value?
Yeah, and what, what the requirements are to get into those programs, each of those programs. Thank you.
Mr. Braveman, my first question in, in this next round is related to demolition and demolition of historic properties. Most recently, in my district, but it's not exclusive to my district, that we've had incidents where properties that had some, some historic significance were either demolished or in jeopardy of being demolished, or, and so I, I guess, part of my question is, so that we can minimize as best as possible events where we're losing some of these historical buildings, can you talk about any efforts that you, that you have with CHAP or with planning to, to address that, even if it means creating a more, you know, robust registry of these properties? And then, in addition, how do we, how do we strengthen our demolition policies so that they're significant notice? So if they're properties that maybe we just didn't realize had historic significance, you know, we have ample opportunity to address?
Yeah, Councilman, I would say the first answer to that question is, that's really not primarily a code enforcement issue, that's a legislative issue. So on the legislative side, you have the ability to, through CHAP as the starting point, create historic district, local historic districts with the community's support, and to landmark individual properties with community's support. But absent that legislative protection, then the owner of a property might otherwise be entitled to a demolition permit. So the issue is really, you know, what are the protection, legislative protections? So that issue's come up in a bunch of different places. I could read your mind probably and think of a few, but I'm also thinking of fourteen thirty-two Drew Hill Avenue, which was quite a, to do, but was a, let's use the word legal, demolition. And so, you know, the issue is that, that there's a, there's so much of the fabric of, of Baltimore that's, that's important, you know, historically, but it is a give and take among community members. Like if that was one, I think it was, if that was one block over, it would be in the Marble Hill Historic District and protected, but it wasn't. And so when communities go back and forth over how much control they want to give the government over their permitting, you know, they ultimately, they make those decisions that CHAP and ultimately the legislature can do it property by property.
So if somebody, I mean, even if a property had a historic designation and a contracted developer demolished it without proper permitting, what would be the penalty?
If, if...
Is it like five hundred dollars?
You're talking about illegally demolishing. You know, a historic structure, meaning you wouldn't have been able to get a permit for the demo.
Right.
Right?
Exactly.
You would not have been able to get a permit for that demo.
Right, exactly.
But you went ahead and demoed it anyway.
Went ahead and demolished it.
There could be a whole host of remedies. In one instance that I could think of, required the developer to rebuild the property. And he did.
Okay.
But I, I, I'm trying to think of the last time a protected property that actually couldn't legally get a permit for demo was demolished. I'm looking at Jason...
Illegal.
Illegal. It was which one? That's when we met, yeah, that was nineteen years ago, was probably the last time somebody surreptitiously demolished a, a protected structure. But you, the situations that, that have been concerning to our residents have been buildings that are important to them, but are not protected legislatively.
So if, if there was a building that was identified and the community legislators wanted to put immediate protections on it, what would that, what's that process?
Yeah, yeah, actually, that has happened in a number of occasions, through the CHAP process, if you want to speak to it.
Again, Laurie Feinberg, Assistant Director, apologize, juggling some things.
No, gotcha.
We just got the call from B sit to come sign up right now for our emails, and that's where Eric Holcomb is.
Don't get, don't get too attached to him.
Anyway, as you recall, we updated the legislation on historic preservation a couple of years ago, and that reinstated the landmark listing process. And through that process, the CHAP Commission can, at a meeting, stop demolition, or, you know, immediately stop, immediately begin the landmark process, which would prohibit a demolition permit from being able to be issued. There is a, there are a number of due process steps from there, but they can put that pause on a property. And that tool is for those situations where something comes up, something's discovered, we didn't know, you know, maybe something important about a building, and that has been used to put that pause, and then it allows the legislative process to go through.
So, so what if the property's already been issued a demolition permit?
It's a matter of timing. How quickly between...
I mean, do you have, do you have to...
And, and the permit, you know, the, the person can act.
No, so...
I don't know.
So you're saying that if, if a demolition permit, if a demolition permit has been already given, you would, we would have to wait until the next meeting of the CHAP in order for...
And I'm not sure, this goes back to housing, I'm not sure we can rescind a permit that was legally issued, based on that.
Commissioner Braveman.
I don't really, I'm not going to speculate. My gut is that, that it, I don't know, that I'm sure it's covered by local law, and we would know, the answer's probably there. But I don't want to speculate whether we could revoke a permit that was legally issued. But I think the thing that you're driving at, it usually happens before the permit's issued. The community's concerned about a building, they get wind of something that might happen, and they could use this process in CHAP. What did it used to be called? It had a name?
It was different than the...
Everybody, it was called the list, some kind of list.
Yeah, it had a weird name, and in your legislation that was updated.
So I apologize, I typically don't want to use these herrings for, for issues that are just exclusive to my district, but there's a property at twenty-two sixteen Drew Hill Avenue, that when it was initially given a demolition permit, along with other properties on that block, it was not realized that it used to be the childhood home of Cab Calloway. That has come to our attention now, and I want to know, how do I formally stop the demolition until we determine if it was actually his childhood home, or make some kind of consideration to note that, that person of significance lived there?
There is no demolition permit for that address that I'm aware of, that started, but, no. But planning is actively engaged in, in the naming of that park that's going to be created. And I, as I understand, Drew Hill Heights CDC, the organization that we work with, is very supportive of creating a new urban square known as Cab Calloway Park, around which we could create homeownership opportunities in what's currently a blighted area. So...
No, I, I don't disagree, and I, and I understand that there are some times when our actions are just too late to redeem a property, and we need to move forward. But, but in this incident, incident, I do want to make certain that we have made proper accommodations for how that area, the fact that that individual lived there, is properly recognized, so it doesn't appear that we just let another piece of history be demolished, and based upon where it was demolished.
And I, I do think planning has, working with the community, come up with a really nice outcome there, which is creating a new urban square called Cab Calloway Park, and promoting homeownership around it, which is probably be, seems to be very satisfactory to the community.
No, I, I get it, and, and I'm, once again, I'm, you know, I'm not disagreeing with that point. I just, I just want to make certain that the community, immediate community and community at large, recognize that there was great thought put into how we recognize that community, how we recognize that area, based upon the fact that, that we can't redeem that individual property. Councilwoman Middleton?
Just to attach something, you made me think of an example of something else that's kind of similar. So I guess as we're going through transition and improving our city, and also schools, so the Roland Patterson Building, of course, on Greenspring, KIP is moving out of there into Walbrook, and that building basically is going to be vacant and probably turned over to the city. And in fact, I have a meeting next week with Delegate Rosenberg, the community leader. We're meeting at KIP because they're being proactive and probably would want to tear down that whole complex and put some house, you know, another development there. But Roland Patterson was the first African-American superintendent of school, of the school system, and somehow we're trying to figure out how to preserve that name there, or some kind of way, which is, you know, very historical, and we don't want to lose that. So how, how would we go about doing something like that?
You have an interesting situation, very familiar with Roland Patterson. I don't think anybody would be, think that building has historic merit, but it's the person. And in that case, and I think what we would recommend, our preservation staff could work with you in a similar manner to, I think it was the Rec Center, didn't you have, the James Gross Rec Center?
Yeah, also James D. Gross.
Where, where it's more of an acknowledgement of the, the person and the, their work and in the place.
Right.
And whether, and what is the best way to acknowledge that work?
Right.
You know, and whether it should be physically at that location, whether it should be somewhere else, whether it's, you know, what it is. So definitely, we'll have our CHAP staff get with you and, you know, follow up and discuss what are the options there. That case is a little bit different, because I don't think anybody's arguing to save that building.
But I'm, right, but I'm sure things like that are building up, because, you know, historically, African-Americans don't really have history that, you know, has been lost, and that we're now trying to figure out ways to educate and preserve in many ways. So I, that, I hope that's on your radar as well.
Oh, absolutely. And I know Councilman Pinkett had the pleasure of seeing a very brief piece of presentation from our preservation staff on some of the, the history of racism in Baltimore, and we'd be glad to share that with you much more broadly and in depth. They have a, a wealth of research and information. And we're always gathering more, right? You mean, you, you know, you always are learning more about what happened where and when. So, thank you.
Part of the equity piece that we keep promoting.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Snead, did you have a follow-up to that?
Not a follow-up, just a question.
Okay, just, I'll come right back to you. I don't know who would answer this. This is related to, I guess, code enforcement, related to illegal dumping. Was that, Jason, is that, so how many, how many cameras do we have for committed to areas where there's illegal, potentially illegal dumping? dumping?
Sure, Jason Hessler, Department of Housing and Community Development, uh, there are about eighty cameras that we deploy throughout the city, uh, in what we would refer to as hotspot areas for dumping, so places we know dumping occurs, and we can move those around.
Um, how many suits, um, have we brought, I guess, as it relates to illegal dumping, based upon video captured from those cameras?
Um, I don't have, uh, the year-to-date number, but normally we do about a hundred and thirty, um, criminal cases for illegal dumping a year.
You said a hundred and thirty?
Generally, yeah.
And, um, how successful are we with those cases? Our percentage of success, or rate of success? All, all of them?
Um, I'm knocking on wood, because, you know, don't want to jinx anything, but, uh, very high rate of success, um, when we catch people dumping and we review, so our division has both the investigators that place the cameras, manage the cameras, follow up, do the investigation, as well as the prosecutors that then work with those investigators to make sure we've got a good case and, and are proceeding on something that makes sense to proceed on, um, and then, and, and seeking a, you know, a just result, so when we're taking those cases to court, we should be winning all of those cases unless something out of the blue or, you know, a strange day, but, yeah.
Do we, do we see a reduction in the act, illegal activity in those areas based upon the cameras?
Uh, so in my experience, um, the dumping occurs because people know about those places. Some dumping is convenience, you know, jumping off ninety-five and dumping because it's easy, but a lot of it, surprisingly, is people that were somehow connected to the neighborhood. They may not live there anymore, but they, their parents lived there, or they grew up there, or they had a girlfriend there, or, or it's just a convenience spot to and from work. So when they get caught in those areas, we don't get a lot of, of repeat dumpers. Um, the, the repeat dumpers that we've had have almost always been where we've caught them on several occasions in the same spot or, um, another spot where we had a camera, but it all occurred before we could actually put the case together and go after them. Uh, in some cases, you know, it's, it's a blue truck, but their tag isn't, the way they moved in there, we couldn't see their tag, so we stay on top of that, we keep that one on, on the active board, look out for this truck with the unique sticker or whatever, and then when we catch them coming through and can see the tag, we can link all those cases together. But once we catch somebody, the only time we usually see them going back to a spot is to actually go clean it up, so that when they come back to us, they can say, oh, I, I did clean it up, and, you know, have mercy on me.
And, and what's, go ahead.
To get to your question, Ja, Jason, there are some places you find the camera shuts down the dumping, I think that's what you.
Yes.
So if you want to speak to that, other times not so much, and why?
Right. Yeah, so we've had places, and it's usually where they're nighttime dumping, and so the cameras scare people off, uh, because the, those cameras have a flash that alerts the, the dumpers, and so we've, we have a couple of locations where we've shut down dumping for a period of time, to the point where we can actually remove the camera and the area stays clean for three to six months, until somebody kind of rediscovers it. All the places that we have cameras are good places to dump, you know, there's not a lot of activity, there's not a lot of people, um, nobody's going to really report them or bother them.
Right.
So the cameras are needed to actually catch who's doing it and stop it. So in most cases, the, the cameras aren't visible, so that they don't get damaged or stolen, um, and we can catch the person in the act and then stop them that way.
I, I know this question's probably a better question for DPW, but do you have a sense of the cost to the city, um, in removing this illegal dumping?
Uh, the quotes that I've had from DPW in the past have been, uh, I believe fourteen million dollars in collecting trash or non-collection days, so that would include, um, the property maintenance cleanups when there's high grass and weeds or trash on vacant buildings, vacant lots, uh, as well as cleaning up alleys, street cleanups, and then the illegal dumping material.
Do, do you consider cameras a, um, a, a, I guess, a effective deterrent to, um, dumping in, in certain areas?
I consider cameras a, an extremely useful tool in prosecuting dumpers. I think that an effective method of combating dumping in the city would be education, um, cleanup, and then enforcement. So, um, there really is no one in the city that is, whose job it is to educate the public on how to properly dispose of trash, you know, using the transfer stations, what day your trash goes out, how to store trash, uh, and I think that's our biggest challenge and, and the only way that we're really going to, um, reduce the, um, trash in the city and make the city cleaner. Uh, but then we have to come through and we have to timely clean up, you know, when the, the trash is there, because in our experience, trash, um, attracts trash. When people see the trash there, then the rules that they did learn of how to properly dispose go out the windows and they just throw their trash where they see other trash.
Um, based upon your experience, how, how many more cameras do you believe that, and I know this is a leading, leading question, that, that we need to deploy, you know, in the city as it relates to, to address illegal dumping?
Sure, um, so the, the cameras only work when you have the staff and all of the other equipment you need to maintain the cameras, uh, you know, the city at one point had five cameras and six people monitoring those cameras, and they had no cases. Um, we have ninety, eighty to ninety cameras, and we've got three people that are out pretty much every day checking the cameras two to three times a week, so that's three cars, three computers, um, and it really is thirty cameras to a person, so the cost needs to be incorporated there. Um, we, we get requests every week for additional spots that we look at and will move cameras around. Um, I, I think that we could put easily another thirty cameras out and probably sixty, if we had the staff and, and all the equipment necessary to do that.
Um, does this budget call for or request any additional cameras? If so, how many?
This budget does not, but we do have a, um, a grant request in with the state for, thirty to forty cameras.
Um, and so, I guess with that, has it been asked of BBMR to include that into the budget in anticipation of you getting the state grant or state funds?
No, we're, we're working to, you know, make the adjustments to get the job done.
Have, have, we, we, we've done that on other grant requests, right?
Yeah, so generally for the, for the larger agencies that do typically get grants or apply for things later in the year that we might not know about, we put unallocated grant funding, and typically their administration service, so that if we get it, we don't have to go through the process to come all the way to the council, we can get that money moving immediately.
Is, is this, I mean, I know you haven't heard the details, is this the type of scenario where that, that same situation could play out?
Yes.
So, uh, what do we need to do in order for you to let BBMR know that you're going for forty more cameras through a state grant, so that we can make sure that this is in this budget?
If they were to, if they were to get the grant funding, um, the reason for putting the unallocated in the budget, so we don't have to come all the way back to the council to get the approval, that we can just handle it and get moving on it right away, so if an agency gets a grant in the middle of the year, they work with our analyst, our staff to figure out, you know, if it's something that we're willing to, uh, to take on, of course, to make sure there's no other recurring cost or costs that aren't budgeted for, and then we usually move pretty quickly from there.
So, but I mean, but you, it being in the budget would allow for them to move quicker on?
It, it, yeah, it, having the, the funding in the budget makes it quicker, because, uh, if it's not in the budget, then we'd have to come back to the council and ask for a grant appropriation.
Yeah, quicker, don't you?
We, we'd always like it quicker, although my experience with just even the grant is, uh, once we would find out we were awarded, there's still a significant process before we'd be able to purchase the camera, so as soon as we got that point, we would start working with BBMR and, you know, so we would come out of the gate.
I just think you need to move like now, I mean, and, unless you can, if you can't hear it in my voice, I'm encouraging that we move on it now, I'm, you know, the, you know, I don't, I know that there, you, you have hotspots, I think everybody up here probably can give you a list of hotspots.
Well, I receive all the calls.
I wonder how, how they're broken down, like how many, do we know how many cameras in each district under you guys?
Yeah, and I know, and, and so if you can make, Jeff, if you can put that on a request, Councilwoman Snead would like to see how, the cameras are broken down according to district, um, um, so that she can see which cameras are deployed.
Sure.
We, I'm, I'm not going to belabor the point, I think you get it.
I get it.
I hope that you make the request to BBMR, I think the sooner that we can, um, get additional cameras, um, and, and, um, the personnel to make certain that we can monitor them, I think it, it helps us in our, our push to get the city clean, and I know that this is one of the initiatives of Mayor Young.
Yep.
Um, so I would hope that he would support that kind of effort to make certain to get whatever tool we can, um, as, as, um, um, councilpersons in certain sections of the city, um, illegal dumping is something that we deal with on a day-to-day basis, and, and, and we know the areas where they consistently dump over and over and over, and right now, the, what we're doing is we're relying on the citizens to be to our cameras, we're, we're asking them to use their home security cameras, we're asking them to be vigilant, and, um, while they are, they will do everything they can, um, we could make great strides in eliminating some of, some of the dumping, if we would just make, I think, an increased investment in, um, in these cameras. I know that the police department, not the police department, but M O C J came in and said that, um, you know, they don't, their, their placement of cameras aren't as effective as it relates to, um, law enforcement efforts or preventing the crimes. Um, I think in this instance, the cameras could have even a greater impact than the city watch cameras are having as it relates to public safety. Did, um, either, uh, Councilman, Councilwoman Snead?
Do we, we move the cameras, um, how often do we move the cameras? Because I went to one place and the camera shouldn't have been, it was like right outside of a DPW gate.
Yep.
And it's a great neighborhood, and I'm like, why is there a camera here, so I'm, how often, I hope it's moved.
Uh, the cameras are regularly moved, uh, all but.
Regularly mean, like, every two months?
It, it depends on the demand, like I have a, some locations where I've had a camera at that location since two thousand nine, because there's constant dumping in that location. We have others that go up for, uh, at least thirty days usually, and then if there's no traffic or curbs, then we move it around depending on demand. Um, I've, ten of the cameras are, um, are, can be moved, but it would, it'd be a cost of two to three thousand dollars to move them, because they're, uh, they're video, solar video cameras, so when we place those, we place those in areas where we were having high traffic and, um, a lot of activity that, that we knew the camera wouldn't need to be moved anytime soon, and, and they've, um, so they're in those locations, but a lot of the cameras, uh, we've moved from cameras where we needed bucket trucks to raise up an employee and, and get it off the top of a light pole, to, um, basically smaller trail cameras that, um, can be put up using a step ladder, um, or other, you know, uh, hidden area that's lower and can be reached. The DPW site that you're talking about, that was placed there because there was, uh, after-hours dumping. Once the gates closed, there was continual dumping in that location, and so the camera went in to catch the individuals that were doing that. And then, um, Councilman, to your comment, if constituents, I know this is, is being televised, so if constituents catch somebody dumping on their home security system or their business security system, our office will investigate that, we will come, we will take the footage, we'll do the follow-up investigation, and if there's evidence, even though it wasn't our camera, we will prosecute. So that, that's happened particularly where the complaints are not about dumping in the alley, but dumping on private property or something, you know, apartment complex, so we do follow up on that, um, it is our priority.
Okay, thank you. I have one additional question, but I want to make certain that, um, Councilwoman Snead, did you?
Yeah, I do, this is for something different, though.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so I wanted to know about, um, I know Councilman Henry has a bill coming out for displaced renters, and I wanted to know where the money, uh, are the line item, what's been budgeted, if we could just talk a little bit about that. First is.
It's the, right, you're talking about the line item, if we have to provide emergency services to somebody who is evicted or, you know, and so, Elaine, you might know where the line item is exactly, but I believe it's in one of Deputy Commissioner Scriber's lines. So it's in one of the services I think we have scheduled for this afternoon, it's likely in, um, forgive me, I would say it's in Community Outreach Services, Service seven fifty-two.
And, um.
Yeah, and Deputy Commissioner Scriber could speak to that if you'd like.
Yes.
So let me, Deputy Commissioner Scriber, so when somebody is evicted or have to be relocated, we have a certain amount of funds to help assist them, and that could mean we look at their income and see what they earn, and then we take that income and put it in a, in a perspective of what they need to move to a new place. We also assist them in finding a new place. We try to find places in the city, but in some circumstances, they want to move outside of the city, we assist in that as well. So we look at what their income is, is it regular income, is it income that's once in a while, and we try to assist them in terms of finding a place and help them new, new, move to a new location.
Are there like a, a set number of qualifications, like if you make over X dollars?
Well, we, we have certain criterias that we look at first, and foremost, we look at, is it something that we, we, we are causing, meaning the city of Baltimore, we are causing, such as maybe DPW has a broken water main, uh, main that broke, that flooded the house, so we have an obligation to assist. Or if it's something that we are doing in our relocation office, and that we missed something here, and when, when people are still in a, in a place that needs to move someplace else, someplace else, or it could be there's an intimidated witness that the police department has told us about, and that they are threatened to live there in the same place they live in now, so those things add up, and we find ways to get them out of the, out of harm's way and get into a new location.
Do we think that we have a, um, estimated cost per year of how much it will be based on what we see?
I don't have an exact amount, but I can give you that cost, we can add up what we have spent so far this fiscal year and, and give you a, a figure, but it, it comes every day, every day there's somebody in the city who needs some assistance in terms of, I need to be relocated because of what?
Okay.
We have to look at each case, um, from a, a case-by-case basis, determine whether they qualify for the assistance, if they're qualified, we have no, no doubt, we're going to assist them and find a new location.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman, that in seven fifty-two, it's on page, uh, three twenty-nine, under the line item, contractual services, which is up, um, up two hundred thousand dollars, two hundred and twelve thousand in this year's budget, that's where we often draw from, that's the principal place, if there's a disaster like the Landvale Towers fire, it's going to exceed that, um, but the money is up this year for the services that Deputy Commissioner Scriber delivers.
Thank you, Chair, thank you.
Commissioner Braverman, do you, um, I know that this panel was supposed to be followed by one that started at four with all other services, do you have slides related to those as well?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so, um, what I want to do is, um, I do have one other question that, um, um, maybe Carolyn and Chris, they might want to hear, and, and, and also, um, a, a lonely B D C over there, I got to find a question, because I don't want you over there.
Yeah, you, you should have a question.
Dan is just sitting there.
I'm like, you don't know anything about B D C.
But, um, after my question, please, you all can feel free to go while we, um, keep, Commissioner Braverman here for, for just a little while longer. I don't know if this is necessarily a question, it's something you and, you and I have talked about before, but I, I, I want to make it an official request that we, that we sit down and, and, and figure out how we can implement it. Um, I know we've talked quite a bit about how, well, the fact that Baltimore is unique, is unique as it relates to other municipalities with the ability for individuals to potentially turn housing vouchers, um, or utilize housing vouchers as it relates to homeownership. And, um, those, those vouchers can essentially go towards paying a mortgage.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I think that's a tremendous opportunity that our city has, um, where we could spur homeownership, um, we can e, we could even spur homeownership in areas that, um, the city has properties that could be redeveloped, where we could take somebody who has a housing voucher and that could become their equity into, um, a, a place that they can own, we, you know, we talk about, um, you know, you already talked about homeownership, but we, but this is also a way to build some wealth, and, um, instead of, you know, our vouchers going to build somebody else's wealth that could be utilized for, um, the individual who is the actual voucher holder, and so, um, I really would love for us to sit down along with Janet Abrams.
Yes.
Along with the financial community, because I know that we would have to figure out how to fill that gap, um, you know, as a relation to mortgages.
I would just say Janet's.
I think it's something that we should be doing.
Absolutely, Janet's the lead on that? Absolutely. Janet's the lead on that, and, um, and she has a program.
Okay.
And so she, I, I, I would be as excited as you to participate, but Janet would be point, and she's, really does have a program that she wants to grow, so she'd love to, I know, I could speak for her and say that she would love to have that conversation.
Yeah, even like, for example, you know, when I think about the, the, um, renovations happening at Gilmore Homes where some of the walk-up units were demolished, I, I-
Will be.
I just, right, will be. I just wish that, you know, a plan like that was in place, so that as people were given vouchers, and, you know, you can go and do whatever you want, but it would've been an incredible opportunity if somebody could've said, you know what, I'm gonna take my voucher and I'm gonna stay right in the San-Tan Winchester community, and use it to purchase a, a home and live in the community instead of going somewhere else. And, um, I don't know if a lot of people in the city know that, you know, we have the ability to do that, and I just really feel like we've gotta formalize that kinda, that, that kinda plan, um, if we're really gonna move people from, um, consistently being renters to, we're already making the investment in them, um, we should just continue to make it.
I, I, I wanna say that Janet's gonna be excited to have that conversation, but I don't wanna sell her short, cuz I'm, I'm sure that she's actively engaged in that activity now, so let's, let's get that baseline and see how, we, you wanna push it up.
Yeah, and Carolyn, please, anything that you can do to help, um, with that. And, and, and Chris, I think that you, you should be a part of that conversation as well. So, um, we're, we're gonna transition to, um, the four o'clock portion of the panel, so that, and, yeah, we, you know, hey, you did such a good job, we, we might let you get out here early.
Oh, boy, okay, well, it depends how long Deputy Commissioner Scriber talks for, cuz he's, he's the celebrity in the next part.
Dan, Carolyn, and Chris, you, you, look, you can feel free to stay if you like, or you can, you know, continue to move on. The only one that has to stay is Jim Majors, he probably, I'm probably gonna keep him late. I'll, I'll probably let, let Commissioner go home, and I'm just gonna-
Assistant Commissioner Majors, please.
I'm gonna keep Assistant Commissioner Majors.
Can we, can we, should I jump into it?
Yeah, so, so as we, as we transition, um, if, if you could-
Hi, nice to see you.